Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is February, or Tuesday, February the fifteenth, 2022. Time is now six P. M. The regular meeting of the City Council now comes order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Williams, tell me if you please lead us in the pledge. The pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just say, you know, thank you all for attending tonight. Appreciate y'all being here. Call roll, please.
DeBono?
Here.
Griggo?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Have a couple of people, could you please mask up? There's a couple of, there's masks right up in the front, please. All right outside the door. Thank you very much. Item two, approval of the agenda. Does council have any changes that you would like to make? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Call roll.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item three, policy items and staff or staff reports. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report. Just time in the queue.
Petitions or communications are all written. Do we have anyone signed up? Si Michaels?
Hi, everybody. I'm just speaking on behalf of many of the businesses. The College and Rhonda Epper, Tim Chrisler, Tom and Linda Perry, Colonel Simpahmane, and a lot of other people. If we could just have a breakout session about a downtown trail. I know that the master planning process is going on and it's a wonderful process. And the process is lovely and everything about it is great. This isn't going against anything. This is just addition to something and some information that we know. And if there's some time that we could have a fifteen minute presentation, either in a work session or in another way, that we could come together as a community and look at some other avenues that we have to add to it. The simplest way to put it, I mean, you know, we're all a community. We're all here trying to build the same thing. I don't want to take up time here without notice. And so is, if there's a time at the next session or whatever that we could actually be put on, so we could show some of the things similar to, you know, there's a trail in downtown Vanitu that goes up to Pike's Peak and lots of other communities. I have, I have hundreds of them on the board. And I don't want to, I just want to come in, in love and community and ask if there's a time that we can have that done.
I'll talk to you offline, maybe tomorrow I'll give you a call.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Five eight. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of February the first, twenty twenty-two. Item B, reappointment of Jen Green and Peggy Westmoreland to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Are the even in house tonight? See, somebody here. Okay. Thank you for being here. Appointment of Dave Wright, Deborah Dunleavy, and Don Richardson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Are you guys here tonight?
Oh, yes, I'm here. I'm here too.
Okay.
Debbie Dunleavy.
Okay, Debbie, thank you for being here. Okay. So we've got Debbie and Don, and Dave is not here. Okay. Item C, award a bid to Inter-West Safety Supply LLC in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for three message trailers. We received three bids. And Mr. Just put that forward and just have a comment real quick at some point. Mr. Just, if you would, I think you're here, aren't you?
Yeah.
Later on, not tonight necessarily, but maybe give us, maybe at a work session, a rundown as to what these things will do.
Okay. Later on?
Yeah, later on. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, approval of the bills for one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. Item E, approval of the payroll, February the fifth, twenty twenty-two, through February the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings. Six eight. Show cause hearing for Flojo's Tavern Hall LLC doing business as Flojo's Tavern Hall, one twenty-five North Chestnut Street, Trinidad, Colorado. Eight one oh eight two, a tavern licensee concerned that led to violations of regulation forty-seven dash nine hundred, one CCR, two oh three dash two, unlawful conduct. Misbehavin', are you here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, would you please come forward? Let me say this is a continuation. Now, this has already happened first and second later on earlier.
That is correct, ma'am.
So just now, just continue. Would you please slur in?
Mayor, if I could, please, I'd also ask that Detective Jed Lay come forward.
Okay.
And he sworn in as well, please, the safe.
I can do it together?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can we answer Mr. Wright's question? Do you swear in a form of testimony about to hear is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do.
Hey, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Good evening. So let me begin by asking you, I earlier intended to you a stipulation regarding the facts and the legal violations. And I want to ask you, are you still willing to go forward with that stipulation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And your, your signature does in fact appear on the stipulation you signed up previously.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor and council members, I would ask that the stipulation that you have in your council packet serve as an admission of wrongdoing and also the legal violations that were set forth in terms of the Colorado Code of Regulations and also the Trinidad Code of Ordinances. With that stipulation, it's not necessary for me to present evidence.
Okay.
And so I would ask if that be a factual basis and that serve, is the allegations and the facts giving rise to this? Also attached to your, under the stipulation within council packet is a copy of the police report. So the extent that I need to supplement the record of the police report, I would ask to do that as well. But there really is no need to expound all the facts in light of the stipulation.
Okay.
So if you have questions of her or me, what would be appropriate would be to proceed to the punishment or penalty phase. And, and I, misbehavin' is allowed per ordinance to speak in mitigation. And because she has admitted to the facts, I don't have a need to speak in aggravation. But if you have any questions of me or of her at this point?
I will do some listening to see if she has anything. And then we have a, an executive session. The council wishes to do so, which maybe I even recommend to go into executive session on this matter to determine, you know, what, what the, what kind of issues we're going to hand out to her. So at this point, if you would, if you have anything in addition that you need to add to your, your stipulation?
Really, I just stated the facts in this, in the stipulation in which the incident happened. It is not something that is anything that we would have ever expected to happen. And we did everything that, myself, the assistant manager, to deal with the situation as soon as it came to our light. It's just not something that happens on a daily basis or it would ever been allowed to tip right place. If I had been there, I don't believe that it would have happened. And if my husband had been there or many of the other bartenders had been there, and at this point, you know, I own the business, I own the liquor license, and I, they'd have to deal with whatever happened and I take accountability for that. I just, I can't be there twenty-four hours a day and I trusted an employee to act as appropriately and as if I would, you know, in my, you know, I guess what's, she's supposed to have acted the way I instructed him. They literally had a meeting two days before this incident on how to call nine-one-one. And that's not what happened, so I don't really have anything other to say than what is in those facts.
Does, would, does council have any questions for her at this time? Or do you want to afterwards go into deliberation? Drink?
I have none.
None? I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Being this, thank you. Being this a public hearing, if there is anyone in the audience wants to speak for or against?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Yeah, my name is Haskell Brooks and I met Miss Flo when she first opened up and I have been helping her as far as her favorite pain in the butt, a volunteer helper. And if I would have been there, none of this would have taken place. You know, I've helped her and done everything that I could, can. And I happen to be out of town, but I'm mostly there every day, you know, putting, helping her whatever she needs to. And she's always free to call me if she needs any help with anything. So, like she said, she wasn't there. And she gave orders for all the bartenders, which I know, and I help screen also. So as far as I'd like to see her keep going forward, that's all I can say right now.
Okay.
And I am a member of the Buffalo Soldiers and I'd like to get back out here with my troop.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Please come forward.
I'm sorry, there was a gentleman coming before, sir, I'm sorry.
I'd like to address the City Council in disrespect.
Sir, would you?
You can take your hands down, please.
Would you identify yourself, please, to begin? Just give us your name. And you can take your.
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Lewis.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Trinidad for at least ten years, little over. And I've, I want, I want to say that I have found nothing in the establishment of Flojo's that has been disturbing. I haven't been there all the time, but I've stopped in once in a while. And it's, they, they've conducted themselves very professionally all the time that I've known them. And I don't know what else I could say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's a, it's a good establishment to stop in, have a beer or something to eat from time to time, which I enjoy doing from time to time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
There was another gentleman?
Yeah, my name's Jim Carter Alley. I've known Flo since she moved into town. I'm her neighbor. She bought the place next to me. And she's been working hard to try to get something going for the town. And like you said, she can't be there all the time. Can't control stuff when you're not there. And, you know, she's trying to, trying to do things to help the town, help it grow. And I think we need to later keep doing that. And we ought to help her out to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, hearing is now closed. Item six A one, executive session. Council members would like to go into executive session, if so. Take a motion on it?
I'd make a motion for an executive session for the hearing.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Call roll?
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay, we will deliberate and then come back and give you some final decision recommendations. All right. Thank you very much.
Recording stopped.
Okay. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, the time is now 6:46 PM and the executive session is being concluded. The participants in the executive session were Aaron Williamson.
Amy McThurn.
Aaron O'Leary.
Phil Rico.
Frank Shule.
Karen Braga.
Eli DeBonner.
Les Downs and Audra Garrett, who saw some of the times.
For the record, any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing that, the next agenda item is to go back to the show cause hearing at Flo Joe's Tavern Hall. Now, I'll see in doing business at Flo Joe's Tavern Hall, 125 North Chestnut Street, Trinidad, Colorado, 81082. A tavern licensee concerned alleged violations of Regulation 47-901 CCR 203-2, unlawful conduct. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Downs, would you give us the possibilities of what we can do?
Yes, Mayor and council members, it now is appropriate for you to consider the punitive sanction for the violation that has now been admitted to. And what I will tell you is that it is appropriate for you to consider a period of actual suspension of a liquor license if that is what you decide to do. And then, what I would also suggest to you is, it is appropriate for you to consider a period of a suspended suspension. That is, a suspension held in abeyance to ensure lawful behavior for the immediate future. So in other words, you could impose a suspension of actual time that the liquor license is suspended, and then have a longer period of time added to that that is not an actual suspension, but is kind of, you know, hanging over the licensee's head to again ensure lawful behavior. And then, you should consider a period of time for which that suspended suspension would apply. So that is what I would suggest, and then you please consider what is the appropriate punitive sanction for the violation.
Let's get some questions from council. Mr. DeBonner, start with you.
Well, I believe a sanction should be imposed because of what transpired that night, possibly a minimal suspension, and followed by a probationary period.
Okay, Ms. Wiegand.
Same thing here. I believe the license should be suspended, then a period after that to have a suspended suspension, and a probation period after. I would also like, if possible, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I think we should. we should ask for training of staff.
That also, I mean, any reasonable conditions can be imposed by you as part of this. So that is also, I'm sorry, I omitted that. That is appropriate for you to consider as well.
I'm good.
Good, thank you.
I would pretty much agree with Eli Kern that we need to do something to, so that we need to make a better showing to the council and so that we understand what happened and we need to do some adjustments, maybe a suspension and stuff like that would work and hopefully that'll get this settled.
I wanted to say I appreciate the good words that the patrons came in and spoke in support and we're all about wanting the businesses that start here to thrive. But this was a really serious matter and it was exposed to social media. So the city of Trinidad's reputation is at risk here and I really think we need to make a statement that's serious, that we show that we take it seriously and that we don't want that happening in our establishments. And I agree about the training idea. I think, I appreciate that Miss Behaven spoke about some training that she had given, but it didn't seem to have settled into employees. I think that needs to be made more clear to them.
I understand, I guess this is one of the first incidences with misbehaving, so I agree with the training. That always helps as far as, you know, having somebody there that is responsible to call 911. And I agree with the 10-day, 20-day suspension.
This is a tough situation. Obviously, I mean, we have, on one side, you have the, a business in the town and we, as city council, we want to see every business thrive and do well. And yet, on the other hand, we've been elected by the city here to protect the welfare of the city and every citizen. As Council Ogletree said, I appreciate the patrons that came in and spoke in Miss Behaven's defense and your words were heard. But while it's a private business, it is open to the public and I think we really need to look, you know, to the public's best interest. If people are to go there, they should be able to see or experience a safe environment. So I think a suspension followed by the suspended suspension would convey that. I agree with the council on that.
You know, Miss Behaven, you know, what happened at your business was, unfortunately, you were not there, but like you stated, you're still responsible. What really is sad is that it puts a blemish on your business and it's on social media, like I think you said, or somebody said. And people will go there or want to go there and they'll say, geez, this is what happened here, you know? So I think that's something that you're going to have to work hard to overcome. And sometimes that little stigma can stick around for a while, so you have to show a good conscience going forward with what you're going to do and whatever we hand down. From what I'm hearing from council, is training for, I guess, not only yourself, but your staff. We also have to consider that you have staff that relies on the business for them to live. So we have to take that into consideration as well. So I believe the staff training is what I believe is should be in place. I think a 10-day actual suspension, a 20-day suspension, and you can explain that a bit better than I. But also, I think that we will do a holding abeyance up until your next renewal, which is next January, I think.
Yes, sir.
So anything that would happen before next January, if something were to happen, could be a problem for you. What we'll do is we'll entertain a motion to that effect and then we'll set a calendar timeframe when this starts. So we need a motion if anybody agrees with what I, I know you guys have stated, other than was the renewal timeframe that nobody mentioned, that I mentioned now, as for through next renewal timeframe.
I can do that, ma'am.
Could I also ask, please, and I'm sorry for interrupting everybody, but that there also be an affirmative condition, that if there is a legal problem on the premises, that the police department be notified immediately? I do think that needs to be an affirmative condition of this proposed arrangement.
Motion?
Please, yes. If you would, please have that in the motion.
I would make a motion for a 30-day suspension with 10 days actual and 20 days held in abeyance until the licensee's renewal application. In addition to that, there should be written stipulations that staff are required to call 911 in the event of any behavior outside of normal activity requiring law enforcement with the addition of required staff training.
And please put in there that the abeyance goes up until the renewal of next January, when the renewal licensing will come.
I've mentioned the renewal.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Second?
Second?
Any further discussion from council? Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Miss Behaven, would you come forward, please? Except what I'll do now is, you've heard what council is handing down to you at this point. If you have anything else you wanted to add, and then I would like Mr. Downs to kind of guide you and probably not all tonight, but you have to get together with him, some, all this stuff being written down. So is there anything that you want to say?
All of my bartenders are tips trained. All of them have been through training on how to use a telephone to the point that it's Crayola style, like children, how to dial 911. I called 911 myself last week when we had to have the police there. I have changed one thing, and this I have gone forward and learned from this incident, that I must run a full background check on everybody employed by me. I cannot have somebody that has dealt with the police so many times that they are afraid to call the police. And unfortunately, that's what I'm assuming happened with this incident after running background checks. Other than that, my people are trained. They cut people off and this has already affected my business enough. And I believe that it has been drug out enough and I am ready for this to be over. If you're going to suspend my license for 10 days with a suspended suspension, can we just do it and do it quickly and do it straight? I don't want to break it down. I've heard that, you know, you could shut down like certain times, busy times and those kind of things. Just do it. I'm ready to go forward. My staff is ready to go forward. They are absolutely tired of answering questions about this incident. They are tired of the effects and we want to move forward and move on in the best way and this was not representative of any of my other staff or myself.
Mr. Downs, do you want to guide her now or do you want to call her in at a different time?
Well, I think she understands pretty well this incident. And I will tell you that we have to post the premises. We have to have a posting to let anyone who goes in there know that it is under suspension. So I think we could probably arrange it like within the next couple of days.
I think what we need to do is set a calendar time now of when to begin. We are now at February the 16th. Council, does anybody on council want to make a recommendation?
She wants to go right now, why don't we just start on the 17th and go from there?
It's Thursday, perfect.
That's perfect.
So the 7th, so basically up until the 26th, then you can resume operation on the 27th.
Audra, can we do this by tomorrow?
Um, probably so.
Okay.
We have, I mean, we have to issue the notice, we have to prepare our postings. We don't have to, but out of courtesy, we will prepare a posting that show me to post on the door. It's a little bit rushed, but we can do that.
Okay. And the mayor had said, I believe, the 17th, which would be Thursday.
Oh, that's right.
Right?
Yeah. So that gives them an extra, Audra, an extra day out. So it's Thursday through the 26th.
Right.
Okay? I'll give you 10 days.
Okay? All right.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's put this behind us. Okay, on to item 6B, Public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending the zone classification of property located at lots 17 through 22, block 3, lots 1 through 11, block 4 of the Highland subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, from industrial zoning to neighborhood services zoning, 528 Highland Street. Hearing is now open. Ms. Hall or Sky?
Mayor, council, good evening. So this case was presented to the planning and zoning commission at the last meeting. The commission approved it unanimously with one aspect or one person who recused himself. And the situation is, this is right at the edge of the city limits. I think you may have a map in your packets. And it's zoned industrial. Next door, there's a marijuana growing facility and the rest of the industrially zoned property is vacant. In the area, in the neighborhood, that whole section, the Highland and Joe Allen addition, were originally zoned industrial. And over time, there have been zoning modifications to medium density and low density residential nearby. And so the development that's taking place, with the exception of a pot shop in the area, is residential in nature. The applicant's intended use is to build a single-family home, a so-called barn dominium. And he's wanting to zone to neighborhood services because he does, he is a business owner, small business owner. And although there's no immediate plans to do any business out of the home, the idea is that with neighborhood services, he has the flexibility to grow his business out of the zone, should that happen at some point, give him a little more flexibility. The parcel in question, a portion of that is in the floodplain and is zoned open. That portion of the parcel, the open zoned portion, is not under question. So it's only the industrially zoned portion of that parcel. The floodplain area follows more or less the FEMA floodplain line and so that would be more or less undevelopable in any case. So that portion of the parcel is not being reserved.
Okay.
If there are any questions, I stand for them and the applicant is also here.
I was going to say, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. DeBono, do you have any questions?
I was just going to ask, did you say pole barn setting?
No. Barn dominium, barn.
Yeah, so it's basically a single-family residence, but it's in usually a metal frame structure that looks kind of like a barn.
Okay. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sky, show me, this is the diagram, show me. Is this the parcel in question?
Yeah, so on the diagram, the parcel in question looks like it has a gap in it. When the area was originally planted, there was a street there that's been vacated, so now it's one continuous parcel.
Okay.
So yeah, that map is a little confusing, confusing the county assessors' property lines. But yeah, it's one continuous property.
I have a little further question.
No questions?
I just, one thought that crossed my mind in terms of the barn dominium that they plan, since this would be going to residential way, be subject to the 612 pitch requirement opposed to its...
Yeah, so a 612 pitch applies to all residential structures requiring a building permit in the city. And so this, even though it is owned neighborhood services and have some commercial potential, it would be a residential structure and so it would be subject to the 612 pitch requirement.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea and I like how your father, is it your grandfather, is helping to do with the land?
Yeah. We've got it in our family since the 70s, so special place to us.
Okay.
Ms. Williamson?
I missed the part of the floodplain designation. There's going to be no building in the floodplain.
So the line that kind of distinguishes the O in the industrial, the open in the industrial, I forget FEMA's exact codes for it, but the open part is in the area that could be underwater in the hundred-year zone.
Right.
And then the industrial side of the lot, it is still in the floodplain, but it's at a lower designation, so it still has a certain risk of flood. And to mitigate that, the applicant has put together an elevation survey and is going to have to do some extra engineering to compensate for that, which is basically raising the plat, or the foundation for the house two feet above ground level. And so there is some mitigation measures intended because of that. So yeah, probably his insurance will be higher than surrounding properties.
I appreciate that all the due diligence has been taken care of.
You know, one thing I wanted to say, Mitch Fernandez, you know, that that part of the city for many years now has been neglected, or the past few years. A lot of the residents there have been doing some work and it's good to see that, you know, you're adding to the area and making it look better. Because like I said, it was always not unneglected in a way, in many ways, actually. So that area, that street and that area is slowly coming around. It's good to see.
Yeah, we've really improved that place. As Mike, Mr. Valentine knows, we brought a new sewer main in, new water main down there. So we've upgraded that place and my wife and I are looking forward to living down there.
Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? Not currently closed. Item B1, first reading of an ordinance, amending the zone classification of property located at lots 17 through 22, block 3 and lots 1 through 11, block 4 of the Highland subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, from industrial zoning to neighborhood services zoning. Setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 PM on March 1st, 2022. I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 7, unfinished business, we have none. Item 8, miscellaneous business, a resolution approving submission of a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to seek funding for the Trinidad First Street Improvement Project. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Gillespie, are you with us tonight?
I think she is online and Mr. Just is also here to answer any questions.
Mr. Just, why don't you come forward, please? Kind of give us a little bit of information about the application.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of council. Yeah, basically, we're seeking an energy impact grant to help with the financial cost on the First Street project. It's a $750,000 grant with a $375,000 match. It'll go a long way towards helping that project if we can get it. There's no guarantees, but... There's no guarantees, but...
Is that for First and Second Street, or just First Street only?
It's, the project consists of First Street from Chestnut to Convent. And if, we would also like to do a portion of Chestnut and Maple on both sides of the, basically, three sides of the courthouse.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, the piece of First Street that borders that section of it.
Okay. Okay, council, Mr. DeBono?
Uh, I have nothing, yeah.
Can you, Mr. DeBono?
No, I firmly agree with this. I've been getting a lot of people complaining about First Street, so cross fingers and toes and everything else, and hope we get this grant.
Sure.
No questions other than, I just kind of, if we don't get the grant, what do we have going for us on that?
Well, we, during the, earlier when we were doing the pledge, we allocated how much money?
Three million.
For this project. So we want to bid the whole project, and we have to value engineer and maybe take out pieces of it. We will, at that time, assess that.
Wasn't three million enough to do all of that?
Uh...
Or, I mean, are we looking for the grant to supplement what we need?
We are. We use some new numbers that we got from Maricón Road, and our projected cost now is a little over five mil. So we're hoping, I'd say hoping that the bids will come in. It's a little different structured project, uh, but we don't know. We're just, like I said, all we're using is the current prices that we see on Maricón Road. That's a smaller project, this is a lot bigger project. I think it's gonna be favorable to a contractor, and generally, when they come in, they sharpen their pencil. So that's what we're hoping.
I have no questions.
What you doing?
I have been on council over two years now. I'm still learning a lot. I'm gonna put this in plain English. This just surprises me, where you're coming here to get permission to ask for free money, basically?
Basically.
I am gonna go out on a limb and say that's a good idea.
Oh, so do I, gentlemen. We have to come up with a match, so, yeah.
It's still free money.
Something I think that, I think puts us maybe a little ahead of the curve on this, is that if this is part of the ARPA funding that we're going after?
Uh, no, this is the energy impact.
Okay. As I was gonna say, if it was the ARPA money, they're, you know, looking for shovel-ready, and I didn't know that's something that...
And that's an option as we move forward and try to build this capital stack, as they say, and get the funding to do the entire project.
So if this fails, that would be a secondary possibility, because the ARPA money infrastructure, ARPA, infrastructure, ARPA money that's out there?
Yes.
Would be a secondary, a secondary source if this fails, so.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? What's the timetable on that, once you get there?
As far as we want to start?
Yeah.
This, this spring?
I believe the announcement comes...
March first is when we got that.
March first, and then we have to, the grant would be awarded in June. So, yeah.
I know that those discussions, because of that, I guess, that agreement that was made many years ago by keeping the brick streets in town, I think there was gonna be some modification to that. Is that true, or is it gonna be all brick streets, or gonna be concrete and brick?
Bob could speak to that in the designer.
Yeah, it's gonna be a real similar to commercial street. So we're gonna have concrete parking with the brick travel lanes.
And have we been able to locate where brick can get, that was the second issue that was out there.
That's part of the overall design, so, yeah.
Well, there's no further questions, call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Hi, Bob.
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
He asked for free money.
He cuts right to the chase.
Okay, on to item nine, council reports, Mr. DeBono?
Yes, the Los Angeles County Veterans Council had a free concert Saturday night, the Fourth Army Infantry Band from Fort Carson. It was held at Fort Wootton in Holloway Hall, good attendance, and it was free, and followed by a DJ that was there that played music for the remaining time Saturday night. I also interviewed Jared Chatterley today on the radio about pretty much what he talked about, the yearly progression of the improved capital events and so forth projects. And it was about a twenty-minute interview on ninety-nine point three. And I was approached by Michelle Helm, she's a dental hygienist, she's in the Johns Building, and she's meeting with Tori, who was here with her husband that night. And they wanted to know if council, anything that we could do to help them with the search for Dave Shire, for her father. And I said, well, I'll present it to the council and to Mr. Rico, Mayor Rico, and see if... They want to actually have a five hundred to one thousand people looking behind Walmart and towards the lake to see where he's at. He's gotta be somewhere.
Well, I think the thing there is that if they would just let us know, let the community know, what day, what time are they gonna have this search, and anybody that...
She's gonna meet with, Michelle's gonna meet with Tori in the morning, and then I guess I'll, well, I guess I can call you, or Mike.
Yeah, so I know that the sheriff's department has set up an emergency station up there, and they've utilized a lot of resources. I know our city police helped where we could. I think as it moves forward, we'll do what we can, but, yeah.
In this case, it's just the individuals who want to get out there and up on the bushes and look around the trees and whatever.
Horrible.
And that's it?
Yeah.
I didn't attend the historic Main Street Board meeting, I was out of town on the day they had that meeting. And I fibbed to you guys, because I said I wasn't gonna mention Noah's Ark, but I am. I just want you to know that the shelter within the next week, all the animals will be over there. It was fortunate that the shelter had a little bit of money. They're putting up ten-foot fans, chaining fans around, if you've seen that, to make sure that the animals are safe. So I think the kittens are, the cats are over there already, and so it's, they're intaking at the old... Yeah, they're, the cats are there. They're intaking at the old shelter and then trying to transition. So I just, I thought that's important that you all, you know, the city is such a, if it wasn't for the city money, that would never come to fruition. And we got, Noah's Ark got a grant for, I think it was close to ninety-nine thousand dollars. They're going to put in a surgical suite group. So we're trying to look for retired veterinarians that will come and work on our inhabitants there at the shelter and stop some of the costs, having to go to a private veterinarian. So it's looking good. Twenty-plus years in the makings.
I got a pie thrown at me the other night, and they donated sixty dollars when I got here.
Yeah, cool. I wish I would have, I would have been there. No, they, they had a fundraiser, it was sixty-two, I got it. Things are rolling around.
Anything else?
That's it.
Oh, Shu, you have anything to add?
The Space Create Oversight Board met and interviewed a couple local real estate brokers to, in response to the RFP that we put out to be the broker, the commercial leasing broker. They made a recommendation, and I assume that it's gonna come in front of us at some point, who they chose. And while we reported that the Commons area is on target to be completed by June, and the board wanted to take a tour, so we're having a work session Friday at one o'clock, and it's open to the public, too, if you'd like to go in and see what's happening in there. So that's what's going on with them. And then on Friday, we belong to a policy committee meeting on behalf of the American City with CML.
Okay.
I have another report at this moment, but I will get with Eli in a moment about the interview you had earlier with the, I'll go wrap and get the highlights.
I can send you, what's your email, I can send you the attachment.
Okay, I'll get that.
Oh, I have, it should be on there. Yeah. I will send it to everybody, but I'm concerned.
I unfortunately was not able to attend a TPR meeting yesterday morning. I believe it was primarily an update on some projects and the ten-year plan. I believe I can get the information from that still and pass that along if it wasn't attended by any other city staff. And then also, I wanted to just inquire, make the inquiry again, and see if we can get the discussion of the ARPA funds on a work session, if that would be something that we can do. I think, I think that would be a good discussion to have in public as it is federal funds. I think those would be beneficial. That's everything I have, mayor.
Good, thank you. I know that the last time we met, there was discussion about maybe doing something for Jim Fernandez, and I'm not sure if you guys have come up with any recommendations yet, so give us stuff if you would. And I'm not sure if you want to talk about this, Mr. Valentine, when your term comes around. I think CML and I think other businesses, this collective bargaining is becoming an issue, and they feel, like I think they're not in favor of the collective bargaining, simply because of issues. I'll let you talk about that a little bit. Sat in last week on a monthly meeting of the New Out Line, everything seems to be proceeding, you know, pretty well. They're moving along, they're finding housing, they're looking at the railroad coming in. And actually, we have a meeting, is it tomorrow or next week?
Tomorrow at three.
Three o'clock.
Mayor, I hope everyone knows their mind if I ask, would you mind elaborating just a little on the housing portion you said?
Yeah, from what they're saying is that they have been making some headway into placing some of these families into housing, rather than having them in hotels. They're still having some in some hotels and motels, I guess, but they're making some headway with that. And so anyway, that's, they're moving along. Last week, we had a visit from the people from Art Space, went down and visited the Commons area, and it's, you know, moving along. Afterward, they were going to go talk to the residents in both residence halls. So they were gonna, I'm not sure what the outcome was or whatever, but they were gonna meet with them to see if they had any other issues, or if the issues that they had were, have been taken care of or not. So they were here for the day. And we, there's, the guy that was on there before was Lucas, he was our immediate contact. And now the new person, his name is Greg, I forgot what his last name is, but his first name is Greg, and he'll be our point of contact. On the tourism side, I attended the tourism board and heard from Ms. Gillespie, and I guess she's looking for a grant for the Boulevard Edition to do something, so just, I think it's a thirty thousand? I'm not sure exactly if that's them out, but they're looking for a grant. The other thing that came up that was interesting, and even though in a sense it's not in their willhouse, but it still has to do with history, it still has to do with tourism. And there was concern that, at the Blue Mansion, that all of the furniture's been removed, and it was removed several years ago because, I guess they were afraid it was gonna get damaged because it wasn't, but trying to figure out a way to maybe try to get that furniture back down here, maybe not to put it in the Blue Mansion or somewhere else, but some of that stuff needs to be here in Trinidad. And there's other artifacts that belong to Trinidad besides that. One are some of the stuff that came from Ledlow. And matter of fact, I talked to Mike Romero, and he said that the artifacts that are being held, I think, in public, they are going to be bringing those back, I'm not sure when. So that would be, that's another one. Another one that I had been talking to for the last couple of years, I don't know exactly how much there is, but when they did Pinion Canyon, they had found some artifacts out there. I'm not sure if they're displayable or not, but a couple of years ago, one of the gentlemen from Pinion Canyon said that they had these, and they would like to put them here. And I asked him, I said, well, are they, something that could be displayable to the public, you know? So I called and I talked to Dee McNutt the other day again, and she's gonna give me some additional information. And, you know, who knows, maybe we could put them maybe in the space, in the Commons area or simply south, if it's something that's, would be of interest to the public.
So much furniture was actually taken out of there? Everything?
Everything, everything, everything's gone.
Geez.
Yeah, bedroom, living room.
Really?
The other thing that's very disturbing is all of the photography and some of that stuff that was Mr....
Holman and Seon.
Seon?
Yeah.
That's all in Denver.
Yeah, except the museum up there.
It's in the museum, and why is it there? History, I guess, History Colorado picked it up. I think at some point, maybe we need to make a, take a stab at it and see if we can try and get, say, can we get this back?
Just rent a U-Haul and go get it.
Too, too, too much wrong. Sorry, I didn't want to bring that up to you guys, I think that's something maybe we could discuss down the road. Last week, I also attended a BBCO, that's Build a Better Colorado. They've been having these discussions for the last three or four years, different ones. And we had this discussion, I can't remember what the first discussion was, the second was, one was on governance. And matter of fact, this one here was on education. And it was really kind of disturbing in a way, enlightening. The big thing that I was concerned about is, the presentation was ninety percent funding and ten percent on the actual problem that exists in education. But the part that they presented of that was actually disturbing was, if you take a line and put it across, and draw a line across, and shows where the United States is and where we sit, this entire state and the entire country, that we are below that line in comparison to the developing countries of the world. And the guy says that they are looking that if we don't change our ways for education, that at some point in time, that we will be below and equal to the undeveloped countries of this world in education. So that was very disturbing to me. So there's something going on that we, that education really needs to be looked at differently. And I think that the schools are trying to do their best, but I think a lot of boils down to families with the actual cause, what's the cause, what's the true cause? And we had some roundtables that we had, and that was one of the big things that came up right away, is that the true cause of education, and what's happening, that these kids are not going to school. Some of the kids, the superintendent from the school district was there, and she said that they have found that some of the kids that through this COVID-19 have dropped out of school, in a way, they've gone to work. Some of them have gone to work, but they've also gone back to school at Gold Academy, so they can go to Gold Academy and still study, but they're losing, they're still losing students. So this combination of things that I shouldn't need to be reviewed before it moves forward. I also have here, just to let you know, a COVID-19 update that I received from the Health Department, and it was fortunately that we are dropping. This was February the ninth through the eleventh. There were a hundred and thirty-eight active cases. It was a lot higher just a little over a week ago. There were twenty-four new reported cases, and before that, there was, last week and the week before, that was a lot higher. So cases have dropped considerably. There have been thirty-nine deaths in the county due to COVID-19.
I thought we were supposed to remove them. We still have a police officer here, we'll have you removed.
Also, just to remind everybody that... Also, just to remind everybody that Thursday night at 6:00, I'll be giving the State of the City address at the primary name at 6:00 PM. So council, I'd like you guys to be there. And we'll have staff there to answer any questions. There's going to be, I'll give the report, but then after we'll have a Q and A from the public. And we're also going to be virtual as well as in person. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Couple things, next week's work session will be on Tuesday night since Monday is a federal holiday, President's Day, and so we want to offer, honor that. So work session would be Tuesday, February 22nd at 5:00, normal time, but there's that. I just wanted to mention to council, Noah's Ark has requested a bit of an extension on their timeframe to, to vacate the Hughes Lumber Building. And I don't know if council has a problem with that. I don't have a problem. We kind of, the construction took a little longer from the time of that signature and they were to be out of there in 12 months. They're asking for 30 to 60 days and I just wanted to mention that to council. I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I also, I did attend that TPR online meeting. And it was mostly the, the transportation planning regions and the COGS within Region 2 of CDOT to go over any changes in year 2026 for their plan and then to vote on that and then to go over any additions to the 10-year plan. And just for council's information, they, I recognize that the last TPR meeting, they gave us $200,000 to our traffic study. So with R150 and their 200, we were able to expand that. This time they recognize that. We don't have numbers yet, but in the plan, they've earmarked 5 million in the one to four years of the 10-year plan. So they moved it into the one to four year plan. So that's, that's a good thing. I mean, it's a start. We're starting to see some of the results of the, the study. And that will be presented here, I think, mid-March and we'll have that for council. But yeah, the estimates are, are up there, just like our, our First Street project went from three to five. It's just, everything is just costing more and more. But it was, it was good that they recognized it and voted that in. So all the way from Springs to Pueblo to Walsamore, all the regions, so it was good. As far as the collective bargaining legislation that somebody's trying to push through the state, CML has come out not opposed to collective bargaining, but opposed to the state mandating, mandating that. So they're, they're more for local control and, and, you know, the city, we already have, we actually have three bargaining units. So they, CML is, is working through that and I'm not sure. Right now, they're in the opposed position to a state mandate. We're, we're neutral on that matter, so. I did send out either today or yesterday, a notice from CML that kind of outlined the coalition of communities that are kind of opposed to that, so.
Just one, go ahead, that's awesome.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Just want to mention too, that last Friday, we have a bi-weekly meeting with Debbie Wagner and Mike Beasley and went over some of the bills and I don't think they've sent them to us yet, have they?
I, I passed on another email today and it has the link to the, the ones where.
Yeah. There were a few that we wanted them to monitor.
Mayor, no report. You're looking at me, so. You all look so disappointed.
We are.
Yeah, right. I know.
Thank you very much.
On item 10, I can actually add item 11. Executive session or discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402 to F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of any elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees, chief administrator, and American Rescue Plan Act. Entertained a motion, going to executive session. Second? Second. Call vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we're not coming out and making any decisions, so we'll just go into executive session in the turn after. Thank you very much for attending tonight. Take a break.